Let's call the City, the Marine City Commission meeting to order. Regular business meeting, February 1st, 2018, 7:00 PM. In lieu of a prayer today, let's have a moment of silence for our dearly departed. And their pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in favor, please?
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
Mr. Flock.
Here.
Commissioner Lepley is absent.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Manager Luthen is absent.
Make a motion to excuse the City Manager and Commissioner Lepley.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Need a motion for communications to accept and file.
I make a motion to accept and file communications. That includes Davis Kirk's The Associates update, historical commission regular meeting minutes from April 18th, 2017, historical commission special meeting minutes, August 15th, 2017, the Tax and Finance Authority regular meeting minutes, December 19th, 2017, St. Clair County watershed stormwater annual update, the Tyler Krightler family letter, and update from SEMCOG.
Support.
Motion support, questions or concerns? Yes, Assistant.
The only question is on the SEMCOG memo, are we still looking at, I guess I know she's not here, but whether we're going to continue for the fee on the water bill since this is going to cover the equipment, the data, and all the rest. It'll, I guess it will depend on that, but...
I don't think they've got that calculated yet.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name, address, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Raymond Melli, 408 Pearl. I'm just calling in regards at dealing with the ferry, and Marine City is deeply going to be hurting, and I understand that the Canadian government is not going to help them out. And I wanted to know if we were able to contact the county, what can we do maybe to maybe get the ball going and getting something underway? Because, face it, our businesses are going to be hurting, and it's a concern because if our businesses are hurting, our city's going to be hurting. And we do get a lot of traffic from Canada, and I don't know to say to propose maybe some kind of a, maybe a bond, or I don't know how that can work, dealing with a foreign country in regards. That's why I'm saying if we could get involved with the county, if they can contribute, because basically it's going to hurt us. And it's just a concern that I'm open for hearing some, maybe, maybe something that we can do, or if somebody could be working on it. I don't know if the City Manager has gave it some thought, or Mr. Mayor, if you give it some thought, what we can do. Maybe if they raise the rates on the ferry, maybe we can make some kind of income. I don't know, there's different possibilities that can happen. But I do know Samhain will be hurting as well as we're hurting, and, you know, with our businesses and stuff. Thank you.
Hearing none, moving on to approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second that motion.
Any questions or concerns on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Need approval for the City Commission's special meeting, January 11th, meet minutes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
Motion support, any questions on them? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Need approval for the minutes for the City Commission regular minute, regular meeting, January 18th, 2018.
Move to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
Any questions or corrections on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Next, moving on to consent agenda, if you have anything on it. Moving on to unfinished business. We've got the property lease for the Friends of City Hall.
I can start on that. Obviously, our lease is a draft, and we haven't, I haven't had any direct negotiations. It's an interesting, it's a difficult way to go about a lease because I just put something together, and I'm not really negotiating at this juncture. It's my understanding that it may be the commission's desire just to have it be a lease, have it be 10 years. Improvements that they make are improvements that are made. At the end of the 10 years, there could be a right of first refusal to purchase the building. Could set the price at the fair market value at the time. One of the things that I was considering was some credit for the value achieved during the 10 years. I don't know if that's desirable or not. But I think we need to get to those basic, give me some direction on the basic concepts, and then I can put in all the other little things that you're going to want in there with the insurances and the indemnities and the rights of entry and the termination and those kinds of factors. But I do need some general direction as to what do you envision at the end of a 10-year lease with the Friends of City Hall? If in fact during that time period, they're making improvements to the building, maybe perhaps raising the value of the building, what would be your pleasure at the end of the 10-year lease? Certainly, they would have the use of it for the 10 years for basically no rent, so there is quite a benefit there for 10 years of using your asset.
I guess for starters, one of the exceptions I have with the lease right now, and I've brought this up previous meetings and I've chatted with the City Manager about this, is that the exhibits that indicate the floor plans are still in conflict with the existing signed lease with the teen zone. So at some point, the two groups and the City Manager are going to need to get together to resolve that because one currently has, as of January 1st, that. And I know there's been some conversations between both groups about the common entry way, but there's other items that would need to be worked out at least, you know, not necessarily at this meeting, but...
There's several exhibits that are not even close to being correct. So that has to be worked out, you're correct. There is a complete overlap.
Mr. Avery.
I'm embarrassed to see this packet come to us in this form. It is incomplete. Just because somebody can do an etch-a-sketch on a computer doesn't mean that you can figure out what it means, and that yes, it conflicts with the even worse etch-a-sketch that came with the other lease, but you can see that there's a conflict of some sort.
I don't think the matter is before you tonight for approval.
No, well, yeah, you can't prove anything.
It's for direction. I need some direction because I'm negotiating a little in the dark, sort of in an unusual format.
Just have a question, and not to get too lost in the weeds about the exhibits and floor plans, knowing that those are in flux, but a lot of them currently indicate future this, future that. You wouldn't normally put future anything in a lease, right? Because the building is as-is, as sits, right? I mean, that alone presents more problems than it solves.
Yes, yes.
So I would like to see us, if nothing else, you know, identify structures that are currently existing to make it more clear, since any renovations for either group in regards to their usage of the facility has to come in front of this board anyway, that, you know, we have a say at that time, or whatever the sitting board at that time is once those funds are raised for that. So I, you know, I just think future anything in a contract, how can you, how can you write that? It seems disingenuous, it seems very hard to...
The anticipation was that the lease would be as-is, whereas, and that, you know, they were trying, I think, you know, they were trying to mark out what the future plan is for certain spaces, and I don't think we, I don't think that's relevant to the lease.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was saying.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I just want to make sure I was on the right track with terminology there.
I guess I might as well ask them. I had the exhibits too, that was a mess. I guess I'm wondering if we're going to even talk about the exterior of the building also. I mean, since they took that on originally, are they going to take on maintenance of the exterior too? The other thing I had was, I saw on page three...
When you say exterior maintenance, do you mean the grounds and the building?
No, not the grounds, the building itself maintenance, like the bricks, because that was never really finished. I mean, it was finished to the point of it's not as bad as it was, but a lot of the spalls and bricks and all that still haven't been completed, and there's one corner that's starting to come apart again. So I'm concerned, are we going to, I mean, we haven't budgeted any money lately for that. Is that going to be part of the agreement also? Since that's how it was repaired the first time around. I guess another thing is, I saw a thing in here about linoleum removal and some of the other removal, and I know with all these old buildings, it's always a big issue, and I don't think we considered in the other group asbestos removal, because some of those old linoleums, you know, sometimes that can be an issue for a building. And then that becomes more costly, I'm assuming. And then there was a thing about city artifacts. They want to put the wood file canvas in the basement, but I'd be concerned about that due to either flood moisture or mold damage down there in the basement. So I was concerned about that. There was also a thing about trade fixtures.
That was in the other lease as well?
Yeah, but I don't know how you restore it to the original condition when all that's gone.
I agree, I brought that up on the other lease as well.
Yeah, we changed it on the other.
Yeah. Then I noticed in the exhibit that it has the elevator, but in the business plan, the elevator they're talking about is someone on the exterior.
I'd say it might be. That's what's so, it's just a question.
So I don't know. The business plan didn't do a whole lot for me either, because the only specific was in there that a grant, not even what type of grant or where it was coming from, or... I mean, we've been hearing about grants for 25 years for that building and haven't seen one yet. So, and then there was a couple, the business plan also had some terrible remarks about the banquet center and the senior center, I thought they could do without that. It doesn't tell us how much the 501(c)(5) currently have, what are their plans to have for making money. I know Heritage Days didn't always make money, it usually did not, so, I mean, there's issues with some of that in there. So it's a big concern, but I knew we were probably going to be approving this tonight.
Well, it's my understanding that the business plan was more of a, you know, put it in as a thought of the direction, you know, the lease doesn't certainly encompass approval of that plan. The lease says that the group would have to come to the board.
No, but you'd like to see a nice, good business plan, this...
Yeah, I don't disagree, I'm just saying that we're ultimately voting on the contract, not on the business plan.
Well, let's, maybe we could just give me some guidance on a couple of basic things. So, 10 years, are we generally moving forward with 10 years?
I don't have a problem with that, I think that's...
Okay. And they will take on insurance responsibilities? There'll be an indemnity provision? There will be rights of reentry for us, standard rights of reentry? There will be some agreement on what will be known as renovation plans that they will We will want to issue them a right of first refusal at determination of the lease, or not? A purchase right of first refusal. In other words, when the lease is over, the Friends of City Hall would have a right of first refusal to purchase the building at the then-existing fair market value. Is that the direction?
I think that would be fair because they're doing all the work for the renovations. Well, I don't know what the rest of the commission deals.
I agree, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I thought that was...
To put a price tag on it, I don't think is fair because...
I have it in there, I have it. I just want to make sure I'm on the right track.
Because there would be a lot more to that first refusal, being the fact that it sits in the historic district, it sits in a park, and, you know, there would be certainly a lot more to any sort of agreement like that in order to be able to sell that building to any entity. There's a lot more going on there in that agreement, so they would, you know, certainly even the 60 days or whatever that was listed there would probably take a good deal more time to weed through all that, to put us in a position to do that. So it would give both entities involved a chance to respond and have some diligence there, so I think that's fair.
Okay. Fair market value to be established by an independent third-party appraiser if necessary? All right. And get rid of the credits for work accomplished during the 10 years? Get the exhibits correct, get the leased premises correct. What about general maintenance of the premises in general, the lawn?
We own that because it's a park.
Okay, so we'll take, we take care of all that. Sidewalks, snow plowing?
It belongs to us also.
All right. So we'll be, we'll maintain all that maintenance issue? Okay. So we can...
Are we going to make that, we're...
With both of these people, and I know that the one is a ground floor area, but the second part isn't. Are we going to make that, who's going to make the ADA compliance before they move in?
Well, before anything happens, this board would have to speak as to the renovations and the plans for that, so I think at that time would be the appropriate time to address that.
If you look at, it's a good question. If you look at page three, we have a process for submittal and review of the renovation, what's become known as renovation plans. What you're saying is make sure that's part of those plans.
On top of page four, they reference the ADA compliance.
Correct.
I think that one of the big issues was, that's why they wanted access to the doors that was currently, that is currently in the teen zone, is so they can create that accessibility. I think that's one of the first things they're hoping to do. That's my understanding, anyway.
Do you still have to have access from that entrance to the upstairs, stair? It's another error, another...
Through the old City Manager's office is where there are the stairs that go up. That's what it used to be when you first went up the stairs from the PD, the City Manager's office.
Yeah, there's steps there, but then that's not ADA compliant.
Right. No, no, no. Has the building ever been the subject of a asbestos survey of any kind, air sampling or anything?
Not done, or, but they had a...
AD plus furnace in there, and the ductwork or ADA, either you remove it or don't touch it, cover it up.
Right.
There's tiles, because, I mean, they talked about removing tiles, and I know it's middle...
If they remove them, they got it, but if they cover it, they put over the top a laminate or something else, then they've encased it. So they don't have to take it out.
Yeah, they're talking about removing it.
Yes, exactly.
I said, yeah, even, yeah.
And here it indicates all that has to be removed and read of the...
And even mold remediation is still an issue with the, because of the prior water damage.
Okay. That's better direction. Bring back another version, and we'll continue the process.
Can I get a motion? I don't need a motion to...
No, because it just shows back as I've been...
All right, moving on to replacement, sidewalk replacement program.
You see the timeframe that we have for the sidewalk? When we can do junction, we can do both of them at the same time, basically. Keep Zone 3 going, either letters out for Zone 1. We redid the proposal with Bob, so it's a lot easier for contractors to come in. The same format letter, we, excuse me, we've started in Zone 1, which is Ward Street South. So everything from Ward Street South, we're going through and doing some inspections this time. Along with Zone 3, getting Zone 3 done. Have you seen the new, you have the new proposal? So whoever gets the bid, we have first ops for the next year if we'd like to price to give us.
You tried to create a little bit of a carrot there by extending to the bid, because we were having trouble getting bids because it appeared to be such a small job, that you would have some benefit going forward with the rest of the projects over the years if you were, you know, accepted, if you won the bid on this first round. It's not a guarantee, there's no guarantee you get the future work, but you're in the ballgame.
Well, talking to the Minnesota's also, City, Port, you're on. Hundred thousand dollars worth of work, two bidders. That's all they got. That's it.
Apparently, those are small jobs.
And so we're going to use the same letter that you approved. We'll have the same thing that we put on, the type of defaults that's on there, and what they have to do, remedies and call us, and the same contractor's list that we sent to them last time, that they have an option to call these people. I did find two more people, we're going to add to this. Okay? So they'll have virtually six people to call. If they don't get, if they don't have nobody to do it, then we put it off a bid and our contractor does it. Maybe that's about it.
What was the criteria used to determine who had to fix what in the first zone?
What your commission set. And your minutes, if you look back at all the minutes here from the meetings...
It was like the two inches and above, right?
Yes, the commission set that with the recommendations for us.
But we also said we wanted the worst of the worst fixed.
Then we... The worst of the worst, let me find my paper.
I mean, we talked about it for two years at nauseam...
Right.
On this whole thing of wanting not just the two-inch lifts, but...
Well, we sat here and talked about great detail about that, and the letters that I sent to you three or four times entailed the two-inch lift only. And that would help to cut down on cost also, because what are we looking at? We only got a little bit of money. If we go after more than that, we're going to have to find somebody to get into, to help pay for it.
But I mean, when you start looking at this, and you see a two-inch, let me finish. You get a person, because I've heard it from people, they get a tree, city tree, two-inch lift, they have to repair it, and yet their neighbor has a sidewalk that's almost non-existent, they get nothing, and now they're upset because they're forced to fix theirs, but some of these, which are pretty severe, are not being repaired. And we talked about it, I know, I know you got the two-inch lift, but we also talked about we wanted this type of situation repaired. I mean, I don't know what the point of just doing the two inches if we're going to have this left, and we're just going to have to go right back through it again and do it And we didn't utilize the volunteer group at all.
Nobody called them.
Well, but a lot of these people, maybe, a lot of these people might have called them. I don't know.
I went out and did what the commission directed me to do. If you want me to change it, then change it now, but we're going to need some more money.
Well, some of these are big patches, there's not even a sidewalk. I mean, I don't, I don't know how we can say we're doing a sidewalk program and all we're doing is a two-inch lift and then stuff like this.
I thought there was a lot more involved than just a two-inch spot. There were a whole list of criteria that we used.
Right, but if you go back to the minutes here that I have a list here, these were all talked about at this commission meeting, starting back in February, and we all discussed about the two-inch, and we all talked about the two-inch, and we, you guys all made a motion, it's all right here, to eat the two-inch.
You know, well, it's one of the big things that we did talk about because of the sheer size of the project...
Right.
Based on the small amount of money that we could come up with, is that we had to start someplace, and the importance of, above all else, we have to get something going, and that that's a dollar amount that we identified. And then we talked about it on our second time around, we were refining and refining, so, yeah, we did talk about that. I had issues with the trees, a lot of us, you know, we talked about just about everything, but we decided that that's what it's going to take to get this going. So I don't know why we're kind of rehashing it, because that's what we talked about.
That's what we talked about right here. It's all, it's all here in the minutes.
Well, no offense, but most of those minutes aren't very thorough, okay? And I'm going to admit that, but, but all I'm saying is, these are all trip hazard, just as much as a two-inch, and there's not that many of them. And we didn't do that many because a lot of people did their own, so the cost wasn't that high, because I asked Elaine, and she said we didn't hardly spend any money at all.
No, we did not.
So...
The people that did redo theirs did not ask for reimbursement. So, I mean, that money carries over for this year.
So then, a lot of these could have been done.
Out of what monies?
Well, how do you know they wanted done the same thing?
We're not, I wasn't directed to go after those ones, I was directed to go after two inches or more.
Well, I don't remember that we just did two inches or more, because like I said, I know we talked about, and I, you know, I guess I don't know what the point of the sidewalk program is, that that's all we're going to do, because we're going to be doing this for 20 years.
The first time, if you look back in your minutes, that we talked about this, the first walk-through was we were going after all the two inches. Everything, every zone, two inch a year. The second walk-through, we start going after the bad, the worst of the worst sidewalks.
That's not the way I remember it, and I can't account for the minutes, because I don't usually like to prove the minutes.
Well, if you go back and look at the, the video is also marked on here where you spoke, and everybody was talking about it on the, on these minutes. So you go back, listen to the video also. Or watch the video.
Is there a way to read, to add those to that zone?
If I knew where they were, there's, I went out, I spent two hours trying to identify where those were, and I...
They're all in one end of that zone.
Give me the addresses, I'd gladly go look.
He's asking for the information, if we have it, why are we holding out?
Well, I don't have it all, but I was under the information that they were going to walk the whole zone, document it all.
I did walk the whole zone.
Even if we didn't do these at the time, you would think you would do it all at once and have it all documented, so when you come through next time, you'll know which ones to hit, instead of doing it, walk through twice. I would do it one, one shot. I use, I mean, a lot of these, you can look them up on Google Maps.
I could spend weeks out there doing that.
Google Maps, you can do that whole section in two days, with street view.
Google Map does not show everything.
Yes, oh, it's very thorough.
That's outdated. That could be several years outdated.
Oh, yeah. All this stuff was pretty much right up to snuff, I hate to tell you.
But as a technique...
What's the, what's the feeling of the board? What would they like to do?
I would make a motion to move forward with the sidewalk program as presented in front of us tonight.
Support.
I think it's important that we make progress on this. It's something we hear about all the time, and notwithstanding, we've talked about how imperfect of a system this is, but I think it's really important just to start doing something on it. You know, I don't think we have time to keep playing the same games of...
You can do it, but we're really not making progress, that's all I'm trying to point out.
Mike, can we add some of those extra sidewalks into the program?
Yeah, like, find me the addresses.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, that's, it states right in the letter. If I had the addresses, I can go out and take a look at them.
Well, I would like to, if, when you do the next section, maybe document all of them, so that you'll know next time. And then if you're going to just go after the two-inch lift, fine.
I can document all of them, but every, you know, the following winter, the trees might heat up more, or something.
I understand that, but you'd have the bulk of it in one shot. This stuff hasn't changed in years, these.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is this one a...
Just, my...
Yes.
Just a question. Do we even know where, what zones or where these pictures came from?
It's in that zone.
These are Zone One or Three?
The first zone, I took them. I just wandered around, and then I asked...
Oh, well, you know the address.
No, I didn't take the address down, I just walked around and looked, and then I asked, are these being done, and I was told, no. And I thought, well, I don't know why we're doing it, then.
Then you know where they are.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor, roll call both, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendry.
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Bean.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, now we're moving on to discussion on beach parking. Commissioner Simpson, you brought this up, you wanted this brought back in front of us, correct?
Yeah, what, I specifically asked to be brought back, are the, there was two options that were presented to us, I just wanted us to discuss the whole situation over again. Mr. Blanchard had offered, my recollection is, at the last meeting that we really discussed this, was that we had a proposal, and then Mr. Blanchard showed up at that meeting and indicated he had some other ideas, and we discussed at that meeting that it would be foolish, being that the good weather was behind us, to not look into both, and we never really made more progress on that. So I wanted to have another discussion about, you know, what might be benefits or downsides of each one. So it's just because Mr. Blanchard showed up at that meeting and gave us an alternative, I thought what was in front of us was acceptable, was improved, but since Bob had some more thoughts, I, you know, it didn't make sense to not at least look those over, so...
Mr. Avery.
Did we pay Wade Trim for parking study in this area? We should certainly look at that, then, as part of this alternative, to see, because this map looks good, but I pointed out before, and I will point out again, there's a lot of people that you don't want to have backing into parking places.
Yes, Mike.
Pat Phelan Office of Services for us, for free. Always liked free, but anyways, he's gonna, by next meeting, I should have a layout or concept plan of what it would look like, and how many places we can have, and how many parking spots, and how it's gonna be designed and look, and hopefully bring it back to the board and take a look at it, and see what you like.
Mike, did Mr. Blanchard ever follow up with you after that meeting with anything, official presentation or anything like that?
And back end parking's not in the norm, correct?
No, it's not in the norm. Now, they use it other places, but...
They do use it a little bit down by the church.
Yeah, yeah, they do, but that's straight in parking. This is, it's still gonna be angled, and it's, to me, that's gonna be a little difficult for a 16-year-old.
Mm-hmm.
What was submitted, Mike, to get these bids?
I'm sorry?
Was there a diagram submitted to get these bids?
Yes, there was.
Okay.
Yep.
Which one?
The one that's in the bid package, right here.
You didn't say one of the diagrams was incorrect, right?
Yes, yes, Pearl Street, one is incorrect. Needs to go the other way. So hopefully it'll be corrected, moving into middle.
Northwater or Pearl, you said?
Pearl.
So if we came up with a different design, we'd have to resubmit to get bids again?
Yes, yes, this was back, this was...
These are old bids. Twenty fifteen, I think.
Yeah, twenty fifteen, they're not gonna...
So either way, it's gotta go up for bid, no matter what.
It's gotta go up for bid.
So the biggest thing is, we wait to see what Pat comes up with, and...
Yep. I'll come back at the next commission meeting with it, and we'll talk about it, and we're gonna proceed from there.
Sounds good, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Moving on to the...
Well, one thing, if I could, I know at one point, we talked about, and it's in the meeting minutes for that meeting, is having a conversation with the property owners around them, particularly, I'm thinking of the existing business, that's the cupcake business, which was new since then, and the apartments up on top. I know when we were working with the music festival, parking was a bit tricky, because they had certain spaces that belonged to them, and when we were talking about partial closures or non-traditional parking for a festival, that tended to impact them, and we didn't know that at the time, and we created a solution for them. But I just want to make sure if we're altering this, that, you know, someone from the city at least invites them, make sure they're aware that we're discussing this, so they can at least chime in on the concerns that they might have that we might not be aware of.
We, our rep had with a pad up there, we walked through the whole area. The cupcake place, there's no parking from city's gonna be up that way at all.
Okay.
Every driveway that's on, one on Northwater, one on Pearl Street. The closest that we're gonna put the parking spots is eight feet to those driveways.
Perfect.
So people have plenty of room to get out, and they will be well-marked. That's a problem we had last year, that people were parking in front of the driveways, or right up next to the driveways, and they couldn't get out of the driveways by seeing clearly. That is taken in consideration.
I just want to make sure that we, you know, we're sensitive to how we might, a change might impact them, so...
Yep, but I will make contact with them, and, you know, see what their feelings are, and then, you know, you want them to come up to you, and...
I just want to make sure, you know, we originally talked about just making sure that they were aware that we were looking into this again, since it's been some time, that we just, you know, it sounds like you've already done some diligence there, and I appreciate that, I just want to make sure that they're aware we're looking into it.
Mike, whatever plan Patrick comes up with, are we gonna ultimately turn this into a one-way street?
We were looking at that also, and we feel at this time, it's not really worthwhile, because you're gonna have all the cars on the, be the east and the north side off the streets. You're gonna have parking on one side, you're gonna have more, you'd be able to drive both ways through there.
So we would cut into the curb, side mark bank?
Yes, all the, no, the curb, the curb was already cut back in 215 for this.
Okay.
On Pearl Street side. And then the Northwater Street side is asphalt, that, we can push that right out of the way.
All right.
And we kept the pavilion sidewalk back 25 feet, so that, so we can put the parking in there. That's the reason why that's so far back.
So you don't anticipate one-way street?
No, do not anticipate one-way street.
If you did that project, are you gonna continue that sidewalk along, all the way to the beach?
Yes, we're trying to, well, put together grant right now, coastal grant, to get the sidewalk all the way around that park.
Okay, great, great.
Everyone all set, then?
Yep.
Okay, let's move on to the new business, which is the jet vacuum sewer cleaning truck.
I think I provided a lot of information, at least I hope I did. The best I can do right now, questions, please. I offered, you know, I thanked the commissioners and who came and looked at the bids, and hopefully kind of understand, you know, how this process worked, and how much time was put into this, and, you know, trying to get everybody together, and just to get a bid doc out there was...
Before we get started...
Yes.
Explain the old truck to us, and why we're discussing changing it out.
The old Camel's a 1994. The chassis is no longer made, can't even buy parts for it. The hydraulic system's failing on it, water pump's failing on it. The hydraulics for the boom that brings the in-and-out does not work. We have to physically take off a hydraulic hose right now, suck it in, and put it back together. They do not make that part anymore. Just the one solenoid unit bank that if I set it off to get fixed, is $7,000. The blower is about $40,000, if that goes. If we set it in to get refurbished, there's no guarantee on the blower, no guarantee on the motor, on the, on the water pump side of it, nothing like that. So we can go spend $175,000, have them go through the whole thing, get it back here, and that blower motor blows.
But it's still the old chassis, though?
Still the old chassis.
And how much maintenance do you think you've been doing on it for the last few years, quite a bit?
Quite a bit, quite a bit.
Quite costly?
Quite costly. Every time we go run that truck for a day, we work on it for a day. I mean, that's simply, that's...
Mike, we've owned that since it was new, since 94?
Brand new, 94.
So we've gotten, what, 24 years?
We got, we got good years out of that truck.
You purchased that one new, because I thought I asked Elaine to tell me it was you.
No, that was brand new, it came along with the sewer plant.
Okay.
And now, correct me if I'm wrong, you've got a much more intensive sewer cleaning program you want to work with.
Exactly.
And this machine's just not going to do...
This machine will not get it. I mean, I'm afraid to put it in the ground, because it might not get my hose back.
Oh, it happens. I've seen power routers get drugged down the street.
Yep, yep. You know, and the new, the news, you know, you notice my letter on the list of the duties for the Camel. For our DEQ permits, we also had a lot of things we have to do. And, you know, we go out and clean catch basins for 12 hours, come back, work on that machine for three hours. Go out, clean catch basins for two hours, because something else goes off with it, come back, work on it again.
Now, on a new machine compared to the old machine, I know you've talked to me about having some of the firefighters cross-trained for backing out on trench collapse.
Yes.
The old machine can't do, we can't do that.
No, not with that machine. I'm unable to sit back far enough and boom out to you, to, you know, to get to where it needs to be.
Because if anybody knows anything about trench collapse, we have to stay back X amount of feet.
Right, and I wouldn't be able to, nope.
A new machine could do it, but not the old one.
Nope, not at all.
And with a lot of the infrastructure gonna be done in the next?
Yes.
Anyone else having?
I would like to thank Mike for the very detailed work that he did, and we trust him to do that, but he presented it such that some of us who didn't know anything about sewer cleaning, were able to spend some time and look at this, and find out why we have the complicated machine, and what it does. I went through it, looked at what he has there, and definitely will support Mike's recommendation.
Yes, Mr.?
Okay, so I went and got copies so I could compare and do a, I know you had a tough decision between the two.
Yep.
So then I even went out and looked, they had videos online of both these vehicles, so that you could watch the functionality in it. I did, the only thing that I was kind of concerned is, I did a comparison between what you had in the, in these, the check-offs, that they checked off for stuff.
Yep.
And this one, your second choice, had a lot more of the safety features than this one.
It's, it's, that, the checklist we put in, it's, each machine is built totally different from the other machine. And we tried to make it as fair as I could for everybody. We knew going into this that, you know, my vendors come up to me and say, you know, I can't meet all this, that's why we know that. Put your, we have a list for you, you know, make a deviation list, why you can't do it, and what this one does. A lot of the machines, like, when we clean, we clean catch basins, what I need is, we keep our boom in the air, and it's got an audio alarm, I need to press the button to shut the audio alarm off, so we can continue it on the next one. Otherwise, we gotta break down, tear apart, go to the next block, put everything together, and that's time. So that's one of the safety features you were looking at.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, this truck had everything on it, including the safety features versus this one.
Right.
Which is the Camel.
But did you read the deviations, though?
Yeah, I read those.
The pumps, the pumps a little bit better on the Camel.
Okay.
The Grapback has a 400 gallon pump off on it, but the Camel's got the 383, and it stops the cavitation. That's what, when I talk to these people, they're telling me that that truck has an over-pump for the pump-off system on it. There was numerous different things that people were telling me. Turning radius on the Grapback, you take a block and a half to turn. That's what they were telling me.
What's the, what kind of warranty do they give you on these plastic tanks on this Camel?
Lifetime.
Lifetime warranty?
Lifetime.
Okay, and those are, technically, they're just the water tanks.
Yep.
They house the other tank.
Yep.
Now, you've got, this one dumps versus this one does not?
That, they both dump.
Do they both?
What, the Camel there goes up on a 45, so if I'm, if I'm facing nose-down, it'll still come up 22 and a half, it has a push plate to push the debris's out also.
Okay, so you got the whole thing with even the push plate?
Yes.
Which this one does not?
This one does not.
This has set water jets?
Yep. You just lift it and it dumps up, so if my nose is down, the biggest seller for the Camel for me was the decanning. The push plate that, every, every truck decans, up until you get to so much material on there that your screen plucks. With the Camel, inside the tank, we can squish that material.
Compacts it.
It compacts it, gets all the water off, I'm back down to having 75% of my tank open again. I keep my guys in the field longer, and I guess, the people I talk to that run these things, these Camels, love them. They're getting six, seven hours of work out in the field, instead of their four, four and a half hour, because everybody's breaking down, go and dump, come back.
Okay. Yeah, and there was a lot of different features between the two. They did have a really good video on this particular truck, which showed you everything.
Yep.
It showed you how everything worked on it, how, how the whole back end functioned, the whole bit. I mean, they did, they did a nice job on their video for that.
It was a, it was a very hard decision to make, and I'm, I'm, thank you for, you know, sitting down and...
Well, this one, the only, the only thing, too, that was interesting on your other truck, was the fact that this company is also a contractor, and they build their own trucks, just because they use their own trucks.
Right.
And so they know what they want for that type of situation, so that was, you know...
That was, that was, that's a nice feature about that company, they build a truck the way you want it.
Well, and they use, they use their own trucks.
Yep.
Which is, you know, a testimony to their own thing. They couldn't give you any better deal on the interest rate, huh?
No.
Now, there's what, is there 67.4 budgeted for, for the 50/50?
Well, we, we budgeted four and five for the Camel. And I think, I think you're right, I think it was like 34.7 or something coming out each one.
Well, I looked in the one budget that I had, and it said 67.4 was the total between the two funds.
Yes.
That's the whole amount you'd have for a payment.
Right.
You don't think you could squeak in to go to a five-year instead of a seven, though?
I can probably squeak into that if you'd like to, I'm just trying to keep the payments down a little bit lower.
Well, you'll save more interest rate if you could get the other one. I know when we purchased that last tanker, we went with a five, and we got a really good rate on it, we also bought a demo.
Well, it shows if you...
Yeah, they had the rates in here.
They had the rates in there for a five, or else we can, you know, finance through our own bank.
You're at 66, so you're only two off out of five for what you had budgeted, and I can't believe we couldn't come up with that. That's all I'm saying, then, you're saving a couple of years, you know, it's a lot of interest, long-term to save.
Well, which direction would you like me to go?
Because that's, that's on this...
What's the lead time on this truck?
Um, 120 to 150.
Yeah.
Unless they got one coming off the market, off the, sometimes what happens in building trucks for demos.
Right.
And they might be having one coming off the market, and we might get a little extra goodies on it.
They didn't have any demos, though.
No.
They are a good deal if you can get them. But I mean, like I said, we're at 64, or 67.4, well, we got it then. We're at 67.4 from what I saw in the budget, and if you go to this option here where you've got it, um, it's only 66.3 for a five-year. It's on page, uh, let's see if I can find it for you. They don't have pages on everything in here. Yeah, let's see if I can figure it out.
So you're saying you would, you'd like to go with option five on that?
Well, I'm trying to find which page you're on for the- I'm trying to find which sheets you were using, because he gave you several, um-
Right.
Leasing proposals. So which one is it, leasing?
Option six is the 58.
And that's on, how many pages is this?
Leasing two.
Is it the leasing two page?
Leasing two.
Yeah, but there's two leasing twos.
Yeah, so I think it's the first, uh-
Second one.
Second one.
Second one.
It's the eighth page, yeah. So if you look at that, and those are each year, right?
Right. If you notice, they do have the deduction for the-
Okay, I'm looking at six years. Five years. Here's the years here.
There's a date on the bottom of these, which two are we?
January 15th?
Good, okay.
So, okay, so five years is 78, uh, six years, 66, and, uh, seven years is 58. We could squeak a six even. And I'm just trying to get rid of as much interest as possible, because it's a lot of interest when you calculate it out that they get you for. Plus, your rate goes down a little bit if you can do that. So we have enough budgeted for that in this budget.
So are you good with that, lease rate?
Yeah, that's what you want. I was just-
Does it, does that take money away from something else that you had in mind at this stage of the game?
No, no.
I know, obviously, it's several years out that it commits us to, but, yes.
No.
But we budgeted 67.
I know, but we budgeted, he found, you know, at a different price, and I didn't know if, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces there as a department, so if he had a thought of, he could fit something else in in a five-year plan.
We're only $8,000 off, but you're going to save a lot in interest.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but, again, a lot of moving pieces is not about one thing. It's about a whole department over many years.
All right. Can you get a motion? If everyone's ready, promotion.
Well, what are you going to do, six or seven?
I say we do six.
I do two.
So put in a motion.
I make a motion to approve the jet vacuum cleaners sewer cleaning truck, um, for the term of six years of the payment schedule.
At the amount, 372-
Yeah, the amount of 372,329 dollars. Oh, yeah. 372,329 dollars.
A lot of money.
Yes, sir.
I second that motion, please.
Roll call vote, please. If everyone's done.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Abrams. Mayor Van De Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, I want to give you a couple of updates also, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Um, we got the new worm gear at the water plant today. So we got the water shut down by about 98%. So we're really, really good up there. We're happy about that. We're glad that worked. Um, the next meeting, I should have some information. Hopefully, DEQ gives us permission, the blessing, for the turn pumps at the sewer, wastewater turn plant. Okay, we're still working with them. They, they didn't like the first design, and they might tell us to put three pumps in instead of two. So we're working on that still, and you all know that North Mary Street's been out for bid. Okay, March 1st, we're opening bids coming in to you at, uh, March 3rd meeting. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, we're going to move on to board applications. I've got an application here for zoning board of appeals for an alternate. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, accept Terry Filo's application.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on this? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Next, we need res, uh, approval of resolution 011-2018, Publicly Funded Healthcare Contribution Act.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution 011-2018 as presented in front of us.
Support.
It's just a standard.
It's just a standard per contractual.
Not a lot of choices on this.
No, we have to do it.
We can talk about it if you want.
No. All in fa, uh, I need a roll call vote on that one, if everyone's all set.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van De Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Motion carried.
Moving on to resolution 012-2018 for nomination petition deadline.
Move to approve resolution 012 of 2018 for nomination petition deadlines as presented in front of us.
Mr. Avery.
I second that motion, please.
Anybody have any questions or concerns on this?
You might want to read.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest. You want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, it, it says, um, last portion in regards to the specific deadlines. November odd-year elections, no primary. The charter language pertaining to filing nomination petitions for the regular city election is superseded by Michigan election law, MCL 168 dot 644E, as amended under Public Act 276 of 2012. The candidate nomination petition filing deadline is 4:00 PM, uh, 15th Tuesday, prior to odd-year November elections. That is not our choosing. It is state writing.
You're allowed to do this by resolution as opposed to amending your charter, so you don't have to go through all the formulas.
Charter form?
You specifically are allowed to do this by resolution.
Any questions?
I would just invite anyone that is concerned about this or has questions as regards to deadlines for individuals when, um, running in elections. And, um, our clerk's office would be happy to answer any questions. I don't expect that anyone follows along without this in front of them, so, um, our clerk's office is great. If anyone has any questions in regards to those deadlines, they're always wonderful to work with you in answering questions.
Yes, sir.
Well, it appears that it gives us more time, so. Somebody would be gaining rather than losing on this, even though it's something we should do anyway.
We're all set. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van De Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on to financial business fund transfers resolutions. I'm going to need a motion in support for resolution 006-2018. Um, $10,600 from Tifa 1 to general fund.
Move to approve that resolution as presented.
I second that motion, please.
Motion in support. Any questions or concerns what we're doing?
Just to let people know anyone following along, these are fund transfers. It really balances out one fund to another. It's all, um, just to make sure everything's under the proper ledger and everything. Um, from time to time, we have to do this, um, as far as balancing the records. It's all, it's all money that we have existing in one account, moving over to another account, just so they're under the proper state guidelines of the accounts, um, as required. Because we have several of them.
Yeah, all the same ones, pretty much. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van De Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on, I'm going to need a motion in second for resolution 007-2018, $13,075 from Tifa 1 to general fund. Tifa 2, general fund for administrative costs, services.
I move to approve resolution 007-2018 for $13,075 from Tifa 2 to the general fund.
Support. Any other concerns or questions on this? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Van De Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner. Motion carried.
This is going to be the same as the first two, but resolution 008-2018, $49,000 from Tifa 3 to general fund for administrative services.
I move to approve resolution 008 of 2018 to transfer the amount of $49,000 from Tifa 3 to the general fund.
Support. Motion in support. Any questions on this one? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van De Bosch.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, moving on to resolution 009-2018, $10,000 from general fund to wastewater sewer tree, water fund.
I move to approve resolution 009 of 2018, $10,000 from general fund to the water sewer fund.
I second that motion.
Motion in support. Any questions on it?
Hydrant usage. Can I clarify?
Was that the fee we paid?
Mike, got any question on that?
Hydrant.
It's the hydrant usage fee?
It's, I, it's something that's been in for years. They transfer one to the other because they get charged for hydrants. So, you take one money out of the fund, put it in the other.
Because the fire department used to get charged for this.
Yes.
At one time.
So is it fair to say that it's a, it's a long way to track and account for hydrant usage?
Yes.
Any other questions or concerns on it? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van De Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Motion carried.
One more. Resolution 010-2018 for $4,000 from general fund to water sewer fund. And that's for estimated unmetered water sewer usage in city building.
I move to approve resolution 010-2018 for $4,000 from the general fund to water sewer fund.
Support. Motion in support. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van De Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to disbursements, including payroll of $154,943.91. Can you get a motion?
Move to approve disbursements, including payroll of $154,943.91.
I second that motion.
Any questions or concerns on it? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van De Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I think we're going to bypass the city manager's report unless, uh, our deputy clerk would like to read it off. Okay. Let's start with Commissioner Privilege then. Mr. Avery, why don't you start us out?
I would like to thank the people in the city who supported the Friends of City Hall Blue Denim Ball. We sold out the tickets there and had a very good time. That was a fundraiser for work on City Hall, specifically the stairway, but on trying to renovate the building. That's all I, I have.
Mr. Clausen.
I'd like to thank the Rotary Club for, um, their participation in the run, and they distributed the, um, money to the three nonprofit organizations, uh, last Tuesday.
Thank you, sir.
Um, just want to thank Mike for all your work on putting all that stuff together. Um, unless you've walked a mile and had to put one of these bits together and kind of farm all it out and really make, uh, apples to apples or apples to oranges or pears comparison, you don't know how much time this eats out of a already busy schedule. So, Mike, I appreciate you, um, doing all that for us. Um, I want to remind everyone that River Retine Zones Patronicity, our capital fundraising campaign, is alive and well. Um, that's a timed campaign. We're, we're looking, hoping to raise, uh, $30,000. Um, that is limited. I believe we have about 46 or so days left. Uh, if you search Patronicity and RTZ River Retine Zone, or if you, uh, look at any of the, uh, Facebook pages, or certainly feel free to contact me, uh, we can point you in the right direction. But, uh, that's a matched fundraising campaign, so I just encourage you, anyone that's interested in supporting that, um, this would be a great time to give what you can, because, um, for every dollar we raise, it's potentially, uh, $2. So that money can go, um, a lot farther. Uh, and if you're just looking to find out more of what the group is about, I encourage you to contact us as well. Happy to share, uh, what we've been doing and, uh, what we hope to do, uh, with, uh, students in our community, so, thank you.
Um, two questions. You gave us a, um, an opinion on some, um, conflicts of interest. I'd like to know, are we going to release this, or what's the board going to do with it? Can we put that on the next agenda for discussion?
As far as legal, it's, it's not much.
That'd be a closed session, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
It would be 15.268 each. Thought I'd try to share that.
All right.
Okay.
Um, another thing is, last week I asked about, um, a bill, and I'm just going to give everybody a copy. Y'all have one. Just to see, um, all right, so, my only concern is that there was a bill out there for 1419 for coveralls. And we all got the email stating that the invoice was for four coveralls at $354 apiece, which I thought was kind of high. So I actually asked for the invoice, and there was a lot more on there than that. So it's kind of concerning to me that, I wish we saw the invoice. I don't know why we can't have these scanned in and, uh, a file sent to us sometimes, because it's really nice to see, you know, not that there's anything wrong with this, but I guess I didn't appreciate getting this answer and finding out that it was wrong. That was totally different. We brought all sorts of stuff there for that. And I'm not saying that we don't need it, but it would be better that, um, we're told the proper, what the proper thing was than just somebody dividing this by four. So that bothers me. All right. Yes, I know, Mr. Turner, it bothers you all the time. So, anyway, the snow is coming up. I'm going to ask people, please make sure you're shoveling your sidewalks. We have a lot of people that still use those sidewalks that have their handicap. Um, we have them down here just like everywhere else. I know I read about a poor woman in Port Huron. They got stuck in the snow, and the police had to get her out from her wheelchair. It's really sad, you know, but it's something that needs to be done. Some people think the city's responsible for the sidewalk shoveling. Everybody's responsible for their own, so it would be nice if everybody just kept up, because we're supposed to get it this weekend. Um, I think the Lions Wild Game Dinner for February 12th, I think it's sold out. We were close to being sold out the other day. But we do have the Lions 80 Fest coming up on February 24th. It's a lot of fun. Everybody dresses up in their 80s getups, and, um, it's a good time, and it benefits a good cause for the Lions and the community. Thank you.
Nothing. Thank you.
All right, I would just like to thank Mike and his guys for, we had a pretty significant fire the other night, and, uh, if it wasn't for their guy, their constant going back and forth, salting forests, it would have been treacherous. It was still slippery and very, very difficult. And Jim and his guys did a fabulous job at the police department. Um, Mr. Van De Mullen came in, and Officer Van De Mullen came in, and made sure everybody got out by the time we got there. And then Chief Essup was there making sure people had a place to go. And then, uh, also the other fire departments did assist, because it was a long night. And then, uh, the citizens, that you, I mean, doing this as a volunteer, and it's, it's just heartwarming. When, uh, like, La-Z-Isma opened up at 3:00 in the morning to get people out of the weather. And then, we called, uh, Paul Ratusnick from Marine Sea Physical Therapy, just to have him open the building so we can check for fire extension. He left the building open, unlocked, for the, the men and women to go and use the bathroom, so, at 3:00 in the morning. So, at 3:00 in the morning, sometimes it's a much-needed place to get out of the weather. I just wanted to thank everybody for that. And all the restaurants that wanted to buy us dinner, and we appreciate it, but we had, we were pretty busy those next two to three days between hotspots, but I just wanted to thank everybody for all their assistance. We had a meeting, Erica Delang and I met with Representative Mitchell last Friday to try and expedite some, at least some more forceful letters to try and get our Canadian friends to move on that, the ferry situation.